All right, we'll call this meeting to order of the council and the mayor of May 13th, 2025. We have an invocation by Dr. Thomas Martin of First United Methodist Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
We join me in the microphone? What's the... Okay, all right. Let's pray. God will give you thanks for servants in our community who seek for us to be better neighbors. We're reminded through scriptures that when asked, "Who is my neighbor?", by a lawyer, Jesus spoke with love and told a story of one who showed mercy. So we give you thanks tonight for those who serve and pray that we might show mercy and wisdom, for we know it comes at a price and we know that answers are not always direct. We know that the way forward is not always easy, and yet we know that you are always with us. So help us to be better neighbors by showing mercy, but doing so with responsibility towards the future and respect towards the past, so that we do not become arbiters of cheap grace. Instead, give us your wisdom and your strength and courage to face the future unafraid. In God's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I think council members, I believe you all had the minutes of our council meeting on April 22nd. So moved, the motion. And you got a second?
Thank you.
Motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. Passes unanimously. We'd have no employee recognitions on the public hearings. We have two public hearings tonight. We have one to rezone 75 acres of property located adjacent to Bryant Lake Boulevard from TNR to TNR. And I'm going to ask the developer if he wants to come up and say anything first. Yes. Okay.
I'm Keith Newberry with Keystone Custom Homes, the owner of the properties on Bryant Lake. We're coming tonight to ask that we rezone from TNR to TNR and that you all remove the legislative restrictions from the February 2019 zoning on the property. Our ask is that we have an opportunity to develop this to the current UDO, which would allow us to put a different concept plan together than what was approved in 2019. The 2019 concept plan, as we were demonstrating this morning, doesn't offer or have any amenities available to the project. We by right can build 148 homes there. Our goal is to try and utilize all of the property of this parcel. I would like to remind this group and all listening that our request is not to change the size of lots with what's consistent with the TNR zoning for both our neighborhood and the adjacent neighborhood. We don't seek to build homes that are beyond the scope of purchase for the people in this community. Our goal is to bring new quality homes to this community at an affordable price that hardworking Americans can buy into the American dream of owning their own homes, building equity within those homes, providing generational wealth to be passed down to members of their family, and to allow this city to meet a much-needed shortage of homes. I don't believe that living in an apartment is what everyone should be doing, and I know that there's been lots of apartments brought to the market, but very few single-family homes focused on the market. So our ask tonight is not to radically change what this city allows across all the parcels within the city. Our request is that we be allowed to redesign the layout of the neighborhood, offer an amenity package to the neighborhood, provide walkable sidewalks along both sides of our development to connect all of the neighborhoods, both our neighborhood and the neighborhoods behind us, to the US 27 pathway that you guys are extending out on Hamilton Road. Again, we're not asking for any special favors, we're just asking to be treated like all the other, all the other builders and developers in the town that are working under the current UDO. And I think there was one suggestion from the planning commission of putting a buffer, a barrier, a planted barrier between the rear of the homes that face Bryant Lake Boulevard, and we would be happy to do that if the council so advised that that's what you would like for us to do.
Okay. Any council members got any questions for the developer?
I want a question for Mr. Newberry. You mentioned about the floodplain.
Yes, sir.
Is that something that you have to apply for to build in what you think is not really a floodplain?
Sure, we have to go through a process similar to, I'm assuming, what the neighboring developer did, because there were approximately 15 or so lots that looked to be in the floodplain in that neighboring development. So the 14.7 acres in the yellow are currently, is currently a portion of the development that doesn't have any homes laid out in it, because the original owner thought, didn't do any due diligence to really determine, is this buildable area? Floodplain looks like it's here, we're going to go with what the floodplain says. But we've learned since that there's actually approximately 15 additional acres that could be utilized for homes that we would hate to see go to waste.
And who makes that determination, whether you can build in that area or not?
It should be the city officials. I mean, we'll make some petitions, but the process is generally approved by city officials.
Will this come in stages, or you going to be a whole 143 homes at one time?
This will come in stages. What I don't want to do is have a huge development that's developed with a pipe farm and waiting for years and years for these homes to be absorbed. I mean, we are conscious of the fact that there have been over 1,000 new apartments bought online in this town, and so you've already got absorption taking place into new units. And so our goal is to be conservative in bringing in 30 to 40 homes at a time, or developing that amount of lots at one particular time, and not doing a mass-scale development that leaves, you know, many 50 acres or so just barren, waiting for people to buy into the houses. We want to be conservative with our approach there to protect our company and also to make the neighborhood more desirable, because we're conscious that there's a lot of concern from the neighbors in Bryant Lake, and we appreciate their concerns. We also like to ask that there be some recognition that by right, we do have the ability to go in and build 150 houses, 148 houses, but what we're trying to do is alleviate some of the pressure by redesigning our layout so that we can accommodate some amenities and some trails and things, so that there won't be an overflow of our residents into their amenities and their shared swimming pool, tennis courts, their lake in the rear. So we want to be able to provide that for our own neighborhood, and under the current zoning, we can't, because there's nowhere to put it. Like, we are bound to that drawing from 2019. So we're just asking for some flexibility. I mean, we can't get any more houses than what we proposed, and that was a best-case scenario. It will be less than 193. I just can't see how it's going to work to be more. But again, this would be in phase, it's probably going to take four to five years for this city to absorb that many homes. But I would remind you that the survey you guys paid for a few years ago demonstrated that there are over 20,000 people that drive into this county every day to go to work because there are no houses for them, and we're just seeking to provide some opportunity there at a price point that people can get into.
Are traffic licensed stuff included in your zone and coming in off of that major highway, Hamilton Road?
That's a DOT thing. We won't be able to make that.
So you haven't had a conversation with them?
Right, they'll be the ones to make those decisions. But I want to address the main items that have been brought forward is that we're going to have congestion, that this neighborhood will provide, bring too much congestion to the thing. Bryant Lake Parkway is a four-lane road with a divided median. It was understood that this was going to be a highly traffic area in its original design. There were plans for there to be many, many more cars coming and going from this neighborhood than what our neighborhood will provide. There's more than enough utility service and infrastructure in this entire development to handle not only what we are allowed by right to build, but I was told we couldn't build enough to overburden that level.
You said it was understood that it was going to be a high-traffic area?
Yes.
Understood by the community?
So originally, when the city council voted to allow for the zoning of the original Bryant Lake community, the parcels that we own were originally zoned for C3 commercial. So some of the things that that commercial could have provided at that time could have been a campus like a junior college or a technical college, a large shopping mall like you have in other cities like, say, Noonan and Peachtree City. So there was an expectation that this thoroughfare was going to be heavily trafficked. You don't put four-lane parkways in locations that you don't expect there to be significant amounts of traffic, because you need to be able to handle the traffic.
Any other questions for Mr. Newberry?
I have a question. So going from the TNR to the TNR, as explained this morning, is essentially changing the conditions, as noted, that were put onto the property in 2019, correct? Is the, are the lot sizes the same as they were under, I mean, does everything else about TNR apply to this property even though the entire, all the zoning for the whole city has changed since 2019? Or it's a little confusing for me, even though we're going TNR to TNR, and I understand the conditions and that's the reason that we're changing, but I was curious about that, about what other of the previous, so is it just the conditions that apply, or is it the previous other parts of the development ordinance that apply?
Yes, sir.
Great question. This property was originally zoned as ORI, which allowed for significantly more density. There was then some legislation that was adopted on February 27, 2019. Whenever we adopted our UDO in June of 2021, based upon that OIR designation, it had to go to TNR, Traditional Neighborhood Residential. Now, of particular interest are the conditions themselves. There are specifically nine of those, four of which are not addressed currently within our Unified Development Ordinance. Because of the cap of 148 homes on 75 acres, that is what is limiting the developer from adding additional lots. So with that being said, TNR is always TNR. The only thing that prevents him from building more lots on that 75 acres is the actual zoning condition itself. As an example, Bryant Lake itself, that particular subdivision, is zoned TNR, Traditional Neighborhood Residential. So their minimum lot size requirements would be identical to what is being proposed by this particular developer.
Okay. So it, so the short answer is yes, it's the same on the dimensional requirements, that that does not differ from the old zoning.
If it's rezoned.
Well, so if it were not rezoned, I understand that you're capped by the total number of houses, but the other dimensional...
Setbacks, front, rear, that's correct.
The minimum lot size, all of that is the same.
Correct.
So it's just these different conditions, which, if I remember correctly, are reduction in square footage?
Garage.
Density, square footage, and garages, and the sidewalk.
Density, square footage, and garages, and the sidewalk. So I know that he mentioned this morning the amenity package. Is an amenity package for that number of houses not required in the development ordinance for when you're developing 148?
As best I recall, I don't believe it is.
Okay, and it wasn't under, so there wasn't a requirement in 2019, and there isn't a requirement now, but it's something he's offering to do.
Correct. You know, historically, if you see any major subdivision that gets built in this day and age, they're all going to offer an amenity package. And we've got multiple now that are currently going through plan review or remain speculative in nature, but each one of them has, you know, either expressed an interest or actually constructed the amenities themselves.
Any more questions for?
Mr. Newberry, I wanted to add as well, I would think that one of the largest constraints is those legislative conditions makes this site planned bound, so we have to build these houses in this configuration.
Right.
Like, we can't squeeze an amenity in here or in there, because there's no, unless we rezon, it's got to be that drawing, so.
Any other questions before I ask anybody that opposes to come up here? Everybody good? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Newberry. Is there anyone in council chambers that opposes this rezoning and wants to come up and speak?
Hello, Kendall Butler, developer for the back section of Bryant Lake, and I just want to show this to everybody just one more time. This is the front of Bryant Lake Boulevard. There is one entrance into all of the land, the original 600-plus acres, and when, and I'll show you too, this is the original master plan that was approved when all of this land was switched from agricultural land to the master development plan for Bryant Lake. And the original master development plan had for 974 residences, and it also had for commercial land at the front. That 974 residences included the apartment land and the single-family residential land. Since then, the zoning has been changed, and it allowed the commercial land to be switched to residential, part of it multifamily, part of it single-family. The parcel today that's under discussion is the single-family. That's additional single-family development than what was originally looked at. There was a, there was a DRI study that was done when this original 974 residential units were put in place, and they capped it at 974 because of the traffic study at that time, and it was a non-county study that looked at that. I did talk with the fire marshal today as well, and he was not aware of this zoning request change and has extreme concerns about it as well. With 974 originally approved with that original traffic study and non-county regional study that looked at that, that's been increased since then to 1,372 units are already approved in Bryant Lake, the entire master plan development. That 1,372 residential units is more than 10% of all of the residences that currently exist in the city of LaGrange. So when someone comes and asks, "I would like to increase the density, I'm only asking for 50 more homes," there's other parcels in there. They're going to come back and say, "I want 50 here, and 100 here, and 200 here." It may sound like it's not much, and it's not a big change, but we, at 1,372 residences already approved and zoned in the subdivision, that's 1,900, that's going from originally with 974 residences, they, it was assumed two cars per residence, that was going to be 1,948 cars trying to leave Bryant Lake Boulevard at the same time, between 6:00 and 8:00 in the morning and between 4:00 and 6:00 p.m. at night, of coming and going. The huge difference, and the reason there's a four-lane, is because there was going to be commercial zoning up front, and with commercial zoning, you were going to have different traffic pattern. People were going to be coming and going throughout the day during shopping hours. It wasn't going to be all of this land with people trying to come and go all at the same times in the morning and at the end of the day. So originally, at 974 cars, or 974 residences that were approved, it was assumed there would be around 1,948 cars coming and going around the same time. Now, it's already been approved without any zoning change today, this was already changed. It has been approved for 1,372 single-family and multifamily residential units in the Bryant Lake master development area. That is equivalent to 2,744 cars trying to leave at exactly the same time. There was originally a plan for a road to be put in the back as an emergency exit that would go through Steep Chase. That road is, at one point, whether, I don't know, I wasn't involved back then, it's a flood zone. There are, there is a pond in the back, and you can pull it up and see that where that road was originally planned is underwater most of the year, especially with beavers and everything else. The duck pond, beaver pond that was back there has expanded. So I've been in discussion with John Thomas, our fire marshal, for over a year on how to make sure if there's more than 120 homes in a residence, there's supposed to be a second entrance for emergency, to be able to leave, and there, and he is not seeing Bryant Lake Boulevard as a secondary exit to any of the residences in the subdivision. So once you come into Bryant Lake Boulevard, that is one entrance in and one entrance out, and so there's a need for a second entrance. So for one, developing more homes in the subdivision, and there needs to be a shared expense of the road for safety exit. There also, for the last 15 years, the subdivision in the back, Bryant Lake, has, the HOA has been paying to maintain Bryant Lake Boulevard. It's in excess of 20,000 a year for that to be weeded and, to be fertilized and to kept cut. In the original master plan, it was the responsibility of Bryant Lake HOA in the back, because the front was going to be commercial, and it was assigned that way of two-thirds of the cost would go to the back, single-family residences, and one-third of the HOA would go to the town homes or slash apartments that were originally planned. That has never been changed, and so for the last 15 years, over 20,000 a year has been spent for that. So something needs to be done about that as well, as it does not need to continue to be maintained by the residents in the back with new residences or residential homes being built up front. So there needs to be some kind of still master agreement in that area, or the city of LaGrange take over maintenance on all of that, and perhaps the city of LaGrange be in agreement to participate in the cost of an additional road being put in for emergency exits. And the main thing is with asking for room to put an amenity package in is, you know, I personally am not against him having an amenity package in there, that would be a plus. I'm against adding more density to a subdivision that has, is already burdened with future zoning that's already in place of 2,744 cars coming and going at the same time, and it being over 10% of every residence in the city of LaGrange in that one area is too much for one area. So whether it's another 30 homes, or 50 homes, or 200 homes, I do not recommend higher density in that area. The change in the zoning would allow for no garages and for smaller homes as well. The biggest thing is we do not need additional density in that area. There's plenty of other areas in Troup County, and when this, when this land was purchased, the developer knew the zoning at that time, it's already been rezoned, and he's aware of the zoning, and there is economic feasibility in the way that it's zoned right now. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Butler.
I have a question. So on here, it shows that it was total home sites of 528, and you said now it's 1,300, which is already clearly over, and didn't you say you were the developer on those? How many of those sites, I mean?
We have over 200 homes in Bryant Lake right now, and we still have two more phases left to build out. We're building out, there's about 36 lots right now that can be built on, and those are being built on, and so another phase will probably start, you know, within a year, but that is, again, talking with the fire marshal on how to handle, you know, the back section, he said is grandfathered in, and, but anything up front, he said is not grandfathered in. And so he, and he told me to use his name tonight, that he does have concerns about the zoning request, and any homes being built in the front section where the last zoning change was done without looking at emergency exits.
But so, just to be clear, the additional development that's been done in the back was also done without the second entrance?
It was always, it was originally, it was originally approved and thought that there would be an exit at some point, and the land where it was originally approved is wetlands now.
Okay, but you also have plans to develop some of the future that's back here that's going to contribute to the traffic, is that John?
This already zoned, that was, it's never had a zoning change, just under the old, it was the original...
Right, I understand, but your argument is the traffic, so I was...
It's the original master development plan, the original master development plan, that was 974 units, that's already been increased, yes.
Okay.
All right, any more questions for Ms. Butler? All right, thank you. All right, anybody else in council chambers that wants to speak against? Come on up. If you would, if you would state your name, please, for the, we're putting this on Facebook.
My name is Tom Conway. I live in Bryant Lake subdivision. We've lived there for a little over three years and love it. I would like to tell the council members how much we appreciate your service to this community while I'm here. Let me start off by telling you that I don't personally, I'm a retired high school math teacher, and I don't know what a UDO is and an RDI or all those different things. I've just now figured out what OPS in baseball means. But my concern is, right up there on that, this property is already zoned for residential development. It was zoned that way when this gentleman's company purchased it. It's my understanding, it's the same company that wanted the parcel across Bryant Lake Boulevard to be rezoned, which you turned down. One of my concerns is if you change this zoning now, then he's going to come back and want to reapply to have the other side rezoned, which will exacerbate the problem. My feeling is that he bought the property with the understanding that he could build as many as 148 houses with a minimum square footage of 1,500 square feet that had to have garages. That's the way it was when he bought the property. If I had my choice, I would say don't develop it at all, but that's being selfish, and I know that's not going to happen. When we moved in, I anticipated this property being developed at some point in time, which is fine. As a retired educator, I'm really, really concerned about overcrowding in schools. It does make a tremendous difference. I don't know where the school board stands as far as their plans for additional schools or adding on to the existing schools or what, but that's certainly something that needs to be considered. I'm retired, so the traffic patterns don't bother me, because I come and go, you know, Ms. Butler was talking about 6:00 to 8:00 a.m. I don't get up before that, so that doesn't bother me too much, but it will pose a problem for others. The additional traffic through there will pose a problem. So what I'm asking you is just to say, yes, you can build there, but you must stick to the plan as it was in place when you bought the property. That's all I'm asking. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Conway. Seen a couple of the hands. Who's next wants to come up and speak? Yes, ma'am.
I'm his wife, and I'm just going to echo.
Okay. All right, ma'am, was you wanting to come up and say? If you would, state your name, please.
I'm Robyn Lattimore, and I'm also a resident of Bryant Lake, been there since 2021, and a lot of what the last gentleman said. I'm a retired teacher. I still do a lot of substitute teaching, and I lived in Texas for about 17 years, and they're famous for building lots of name... they're famous for building lots of neighborhoods and then worrying about the schools later. So we talked about the overcrowding, that is a big issue. We would build new schools in Texas, and they were already putting up trailers because the neighborhoods were going up faster than they can get the school built. So brand-new school, trailers already, because you think about 148 lots, plus the apartments coming in, plus the townhomes that are there, plus the new phase coming up in Bryant Lake, Clearview's going to be overburdened, overwhelmed. They'll have to build new schools, so start rezoning the kids to other schools. And I would suggest you come out and, it's like she said, 6:00 to 8:00 a.m. in the morning, and you get on Bryant Lake Boulevard, and you try and turn right or left in the dark at that intersection. They would have to put a light in there because with that many cars, I mean, the cars coming in from like the sheriff and the jails and all that, they're zooming through like NASCAR, and then you've got the cars coming from the other direction from the high school, and you have to pull across there to get out, and then you're talking about putting hundreds of more cars in that particular intersection. I mean, even with what there is now, it can be quite a hassle just to pull out of there. And I keep thinking, you put more cars, or you put a stoplight, where do you have a light to the right? Are they really going to put another light there in front of where the liquor store is there? Probably not, because there's just not enough room. So I think the traffic and the school are really things that we need to consider, because like I said, I've been at the schools where they're putting trailers up. I'd hate to see them doing that at Clearview, one of the newest beautiful school there, but those classrooms will become overwhelmed when you add that many homes, and you're talking about adding even more. So I just, like they said, he bought this with the plan in place, and to come in and try and change it, I think is wrong. I think that, I hope you all consider that, and I appreciate you taking this up and listening to it and listening to the residents.
Thank you, Ms. Lattimore. Anyone else in council chambers that would like to speak?
Hello, I'm Teresa Britton. I just moved here, and I was not aware that there was going to be more than what's already To me, it's already a little overwhelming, and, you know, when you come to look, you just see a small little snippet. You don't realize what it's truly like. And I too see that it would be a huge burden. I don't know that anyone here on council lives in Bryant Lake, and I appreciate you all taking that into consideration. Would you want that in your particular neighborhood? Because it's just overwhelming. And if they're not going to put garages, I haven't even seen this plan. I was curious, when you all keep flashing it up so quick, I would actually like to see it. Where are they going to put their cars if they don't have a garage? I mean, is it going to make it look bad to have all that? I mean, personally, I hope that you all say no. It's just not what I had hoped for. And I know people want to build, 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 but they're, who wants a teeny tiny little spot that you could literally flick a pebble and it hit your neighbor? I think it should be, personally, a little more space than what most builders want to do. And I understand it's all about money, but there's a little bit about having a little bit of space and not just being overwhelmed every single day. And I appreciate you all's time listening to me, so thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Britton. Is anyone else wanting to speak against? All right, see you none. I'm going to ask the developer if he wants to come back up and address some of the concerns.
Before he comes up, I can ask Mark Cost.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I've got a couple of questions from Mr. Costel before you come up.
Can I ask you a question? This master plan right here, when was that developed?
I can't speak to exactly when it was created, but I do know this, after consultation with Ms. Butler and our city attorney, that master plan was created not with the current property owner. That deal was likely brokered between Ms. Butler and Silver Oaks Bowery, which had previously owned property within Bryant Lake, and also Greg Rogers. The Greg Rogers property is actually what Keystone Custom Homes had acquired. So once again, to be clear, the city was never part of that master-planned community, and as such, we're not bound by it.
Okay. The city was never partnered in this master plan, right? Did this master plan exist prior to a bankruptcy being filed on all this acreage and being sold off by a bank?
That's our, unfortunately, I could not answer. I just don't have that knowledge.
Mr. Todd, can you answer that question?
Not on the fly. This was 15, 18 years ago. I don't even know what you're holding there. I'm sorry, I can't.
Okay, can you pass that to Mr. Todd? And the only reason why I'm asking that is because when I first came on the council eight years ago, this was a discussion about a huge master plan that existed that was owned by one entity that went into bankruptcy and then sold off to different people in some sort of auction sale. I'm only bringing this up because it seems like we're trying to hold on to something that has no merit. People were sold something that did not exist by virtue of this city. As it was stated, we were never part of this. So, and this is the way it was explained to me when I first came on to the council. Property was sold in an auction, different people bought it to do what they wanted to do, however they wanted to do it. And it was sold to people saying that, oh, this is an exclusive community, they're only bound by this and bound by that, and I'm trying to ascertain guidance from my legal counsel, from the professionals that are in this. Am my duty bound to honor something prior to a bankruptcy sale?
I can perhaps at least clear up that issue.
You've had your time.
Please.
What's before you now, it has a zoning under the UDO and conditions which were done in 2019, which was after all of that foreclosure and bankruptcy. So I don't think the foreclosure that you're talking about on the original master plan development agreement is really anything you have to be concerned with. You've got 2019 conditions on new UDO zoning.
Is there a 2019 master plan that this city's agreed to?
The 2019 legislation, as Mr. Costel calls it, was a rezoning with conditions.
Not a master plan, but a rezoning.
Not a master plan, it was just for the property at issue.
Okay, so let's just, let's just be absolutely crystal clear. There is no master plan.
That's right.
It is recorded at the courthouse, there is. And it was approved by the city here, so let that run in 2005.
That's true, but this, listen, this isn't the 2005 master plan.
It is. That is from 2005.
If you compare this to what's recorded.
All right, all right, I'm going to have to ask all, I'm going to have to ask all, hey, Mr. Newberry, I'm going to ask all, I'm going to ask all the huss. Mr. Costel and Mr. Gaskins has got the floor.
You didn't do all that because of me, man. I'm just, I'm trying to get clarification on what's what, because there's, something's being fudged here somewhere, and I'm sitting in the middle. It's an election year for me, I'm trying to be really, you know, nice and cordial and everything. But somebody's lying to me, and somebody better, somebody better give me some answers. That's all I'm saying. Somebody's lying to me. Now, either my staff is lying to me, this developer's lying to me, that developer's lying to me. All I'm saying is, I know you all bought this property, I know you all spent a lot of money, but somebody ain't telling me the truth, flat out. All y'all can't be right.
All right.
And that's all I got to say. I'm more, yes. I have one question for Mr. Costel.
Yes, sir.
The garages. Is a garage required if a rezoning is approved?
If a rezoning is approved, Dr. Gore, technically, a garage is not required as part of a single-family detached home. Based upon my conversations with the developer, his intent is to allow for garages, but he would like relief from being required to have two garages and the latitude to merely have one on certain lots.
Could that be a condition attached to the rezoning, to have a garage?
I believe it likely can, yes, sir.
All right, I want to hear from the developer in concern, some of these concerns, what you.
So there's one provision in the original master plan community that is continuously not discussed, that our attorneys pointed out to us before we bought the property, and it states that if our commercial lots out front during the original master plan were not brought into or annexed into the master plan by the original developers, that they could not be done afterwards. And so when we bought the property, our legal team said, look, this is totally outside of the original master plan community. So any reference to the original master plan community, it's not real, it's not legal, and it doesn't stand up. So when you guys rezoned, Mr. Rogers, you did so legally, the courts ruled so on 13 of the 14 complaints brought by the former owner, Mr. of the Silver Oak Bowery, which was one of the original developers. We don't intend to build houses without garages. People need garages, people utilize garages, they want garages. I would gladly put a provision in this to say that we will have a single or double-car garage, depending on the appropriateness of the house. The 1,500-square-foot minimum in 2019, when this was done, made a lot of sense. Not saying that we don't need to build some houses that are that size or larger, but our goal is to give more La Grange residents opportunities to own homes at an entry-level price. We're not here to protect our investment, we're here to shoot you straight what our goal is, provide La Grange residents with new homes that they can afford. They will be on the same-sized lots as the neighborhood behind us. They will have the same exterior finish styles with fiber cement siding, shingle roofs, bricks and/or shakes. So we're not looking to make Section 8 housing, as has been referenced here before us a few years ago, or houses that are not conforming with the general area.
All right, thank you. All right, I'm going to declare this public hearing closed. We got all our comments. This is not, I'm not a judge, I'm not up here to let you all keep arguing back and forth with each other, so we just wanted to hear from the community and from the developer. So thank you. We'll move on to the next thing. We got another public hearing to grant a special use permit in the 300 block of Perimeter Drive. Costel, has this been publicly, I mean, has it been properly advertised?
Just like the previous public hearing, yes, Mr. Mayor, it has been.
All right, so is there anyone in council chambers that wants to speak for or against this special use permit on Perimeter Drive? Make sure, all right, see you none. I declare this public hearing closed. Petitions and communications, we have a grant, we have to grant a special use permit in the 300 block of Perimeter Drive. And just to be, just so you all know, this is up ripe for vote now, we don't have to have a second reading on that special use permit. Can I, I'll entertain.
So moved to approve.
I'd like to remind you all that because I am property in this neighborhood, that I am going to be abstaining.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to grant a special use permit for the 300 block of Perimeter Drive.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion?
Yes. All right. I got a question from Mr. Costel.
Okay.
Mr. Costel, can you reconfirm to me that every resident within the stated designated distance was notified by letter of this rezoning?
Based upon the information provided or shared with me by the applicant as a part of her special use permit application, notification has been sent out to every property owner located within 500 feet of this property, alerting them to the fact that it will likely be used as a short-term rental.
And you've received no responses?
That is correct, sir.
Any more discussion? All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same? Passes four, five to one, one, one extension. I don't know how, what I'm, passes unanimously, we want to abstain, abstention. I think so I should say it. All right, and then we got a petition to accept Peter Street property.
Yes, sir. As discussed this morning, Mitch Key's Law Firm is wanting to donate a parcel of property on Peter Street to the city. We've done all the due diligence and recommend accepting the property if it be your desire.
Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve or make a second.
I got a motion and a second, any discussion?
I had a question. Did you say Key?
Mitch Key's Law Firm.
Mitch Key's Law Firm.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same? Passes unanimously. Then we got the Chattahoochee Fuller Foundation, and I guess I'll elaborate on this for just a second, and we talked about it at work session today. This is, the Chattahoochee Fuller Foundation from Valley, Alabama, wants to build Ms. Shantavia Henderson a home, and she was the mother of the 14-year-old boy that got shot to Marion Carter. And they're wanting to build her a home free and clear here in La Grange on Cockwood Street. And we have people that are donating property, people that are donating time. I know of two entities that are donating $15,000 a piece, so they're, they do this, and they've done it quite a few times, and they just told me, they contacted me and said they just really thought this would be a great thing for this mother here in La Grange. And being that they have done it before in the past in the valley, they asked me, you know, proper ways to go through it. What I'm asking tonight is from the council to approve the city donating funds from the Community Block Grant Fund to pay for permits and sewer taps and water taps for this particular property. We would donate it to the Fuller Foundation, and then in turn, they would pay for the permitting.
So moved.
I got a motion and a second, any discussion?
I got a question, Patrick.
Yes, sir.
Can you tell me how much money is in that fund?
$147,000 roughly.
And what that fund is for?
It is for investment in low-income housing projects in the city of La Grange. So this would certainly qualify for that, I believe.
And we're looking to spend probably up to, I don't want to put a number on it, but $6,500 would probably be maximum for all the permitting and tap fees. Depending on the lot, there may already be sewer taps there and water taps, so we may not even have to pay for that. So it just depends on that particular.
I just want to say thank you to our partners, for, you know, for showing their side of humanity. Thank you, city, for doing this.
Well, he voted on it.
Thank you. I thank everybody that's humanitarian. Thank you to our very own Mrs. Darby Pippin. Thank you to the La Grange Housing Authority, which nothing would be possible because they donated the land for this. Nothing was going to happen until they donated the land, so thanks to our very own La Grange Housing Authority, and thanks to this Fuller Center. That's all I got for you.
All right, any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same? Passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, we got approval of an easement for Nola Restaurant.
We're fortunate to have a nice new restaurant downtown. See Josh in the back there, the owner, and it's been very successful. In order to support the business, they've got a need that they've come to the city council for, and that is to install a cooler that would encroach onto the city's property behind one of the buildings next to the restaurant. We don't see any conflicts or issues, they would do all the work, so all we're asking for is approval for the mayor and the clerk to execute the easement.
So moved to pass an easement?
Second. Got a motion and a second, any discussion?
Got clarification, and in this easement, we could, this easement can be withdrawn at any time.
Yes, sir, it can be withdrawn with how many days' notice? It can be withdrawn with how many days' notice, Jeff, if you recall?
Sixty days, I think. Thirty or sixty.
Yes, sir.
All right, any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same? Passes unanimously. All right, acceptance of streets across Vine Phase Two.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Excuse me, consistent with our conversation earlier this morning at the, uh, work session, we're here to ask you all to accept streets within the Crossvine Village Phase Two. Uh, this is a development off of the Hoganville Road, which is off of, um, and the development itself is off Mill Creek Parkway. This is a forty-three acre development, uh, consisting of a hundred and twenty-seven lots. One street will be a continuation of a street that is already, uh, developed in that area, which is Shenador Lane. Other streets will be Circus Drive, Beach Craft Court, Carbon Cub Lane, and Gov Stream Drive. So, we're asking for you to accept those streets into our street system, as well as infrastructure that I talked to you about earlier this morning, that will be deeded over to the city of LaGrange that infrastructure is in, with the exception of the sidewalks, which we put in as the property is developed.
Motion to accept.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I would just like to clarify that, as you told us this morning, that, uh, these streets have met specifications, and they come with a warranty for.
That is correct. There's a two-year road warranty. If there's an additional phase to it, there's an additional year added on top of it. This is the phase that the two-year warranty would be applicable. Plus, the top coating has already been implemented on these streets, so I do have a bond in the event there's any damage to them, uh, during construction.
Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same? Passes unanimously. All right, city manager report.
Yes, sir, a few items. Um, first is the budget. City's budget runs from July first to June thirtieth, and in order to stay on the proper timeline, we presented the, uh, proposed budget to the mayor and council this, this morning during, or actually, this afternoon during the work session. And, uh, you would need to call for a public hearing for the next meeting, uh, in order to receive any public comments.
Motion to call for public hearing?
Second.
I got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I do have one question. You mentioned that it was going to be available for inspection. Is that online, or is that in person, or?
We have a copy in the clerk's office. If you'd like us to do anything different, we certainly can, but.
Does it need to be online? What you guys think?
What do y'all think?
We can put it on the website if you'd like to.
I would say that.
Social media?
If we could get it on the web, at least get it on the website. And then we could, and then we could, um, put it on social media that says that, go to the website.
It's available.
I just, all I know is that, you know, somebody may have a question, neither of them is going to.
Yeah, we can put it on the website for sure.
So, just to be transparent, you know, just, just put it online, I'm fine.
We can do that.
Totally fine with that.
Certainly.
Okay. Uh, got a motion and a second. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same? Passes unanimously.
Second item is, we have some surplus equipment that, uh, we would like the council to declare.
Motion to declare a surplus?
Perfect.
Second. I got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same? Passes unanimously.
Next item, we're required to notify the tax assessor under House Bill 581, um, which is the floating homestead exemption law, uh, that limits the amount of property taxes that can be increased on a, uh, homestead property. And because the city has no property taxes, uh, we're proposing to authorize the city manager to send a letter with a zero mil property tax for that, uh, new house bill.
So moved. Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same? Passes unanimously.
Next item, we had an anti-lightem notice, uh, from, uh, Mrs. Jamira Kendricks, and, uh, this was discussed in the work session, and we would recommend that, uh, we deny the claim.
Motion to deny.
Got a motion. Got a second, and I know, got some discussion.
No, you can go ahead and accuse.
You don't, okay. He's just going to accuse himself. Um, any, any discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same? Passes unanimously with one abstention.
Last item, uh, that I have on my report is, uh, we've been approached by actually a couple of people that were interested in purchasing the city's, uh, property at thirty-three South Lafayette Square. Uh, this is a, a building that's currently unoccupied, and, uh, hopefully somebody will be able to turn that into something nice on the square. If it be your desire, uh, declare that surplus, and I think you had expressed an interest in a hundred fifty thousand dollar minimum bid.
So moved.
I got a motion.
Second.
Got a second. Any discussion?
I have a question for Patrick.
Yes, sir.
We were talking this morning about sealed bids.
That's correct. That's the way it has to be.
Is there another option, such as, um, an open auction where the two, or the interested parties could bid against each other? Is that an option?
Uh, there are other options. I believe an actual auction is one of those options.
Can you attach a minimum bid to an auction?
I'm sure you could have a minimum acceptable bid.
I just, just thinking about it, I think that would give any interested parties an opportunity to, um, you know, if they just make one offer, and somebody happens to offer one dollar more than the other person, seems like they should each have, you know, or whoever's interested should have a chance to outbid somebody else. Does that mean we have to, like, hire an auctioneer and give them a portion of the proceeds? How does that work?
Uh, well, A, we've not done it. I don't know that it requires a professional auctioneer, though.
The way he could do it.
If it, if it be your desire, we could, uh, look into the logistics of that, Dr. Gore, and see how that would work. If you, if that's your preference to go that direction, we can go that direction if it, if we can make the logistics work.
I'm just thinking, give any interested party the option to get the property and, and would help us, because we would probably get more for it.
Could it be opened up to be bid on the courthouse step, like our other property? Couldn't do that?
I, I don't know that, the statute doesn't prohibit us from doing it at any particular place.
So, we'll certainly, if, if, if you vote to pursue this, we'll, we'll certainly look into logistics.
Do we want to, do we want to table this until the next meeting, until you can get some answers for?
Or do we vote to pursue it, and then just let them figure it out? I think it would be fine if, if Mr. Bowie would, would, um, just.
Yeah, we'll let you know. If you want to go ahead and vote to, to declare a surplus, or, I guess we're declaring a surplus, right, and, and put a hundred fifty thousand minimum bid on it, and then we'll get back to you on the logistics of how we'll do that.
That's, that's fine with me.
Which is what the motion was, right?
The mo- yes, the motion was to declare a surplus, and I got a second. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same? Passes unanimously. Uh, re- under, that's all you got, city manager?
Yes, sir, that's it.
Okay, sorry. Under resolutions, I have a renaming fire station number four to Bobby A. Trailer Fire Station. And we had a great time today, and, uh, Mr. Bobby Trailer was very excited and.
Surprised.
Very surprised.
Yeah.
Motion to approve.
Did he not know until he got there?
He did not.
Aye.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same?
He thought he was going to a ribbon cutting.
Just a regular ribbon.
Yeah. He, he, he attends every ribbon cutting that the chamber does, and he, they asked him to be at the ribbon cutting today at ten.
Oh, fine.
That's how he got there.
Okay.
All right, first reading of ordinances. We got, um, proposed renaming of Linden Avenue to Jim Thompson Drive.
An ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of LaGrange to amend the code of the city, to amend the code so as to rename Linden Avenue as Jim Thompson Drive, to repeal conflicting ordinances, fix an effective date, and for other purposes.
All right, we got, uh, first reading to rezone seventy-five acres of property located adjacent to Bryant Lake Boulevard from TNR to TNR.
An ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of LaGrange to amend the zoning ordinance of the city of LaGrange so as to reclassify with conditions the use of real estate located on Bryant Lake Boulevard and owned by Keystone Custom Homes, to repeal conflicting ordinances, to fix an effective date, and for other purposes.
All right, to name certain streets in Crossvine Village subdivision.
An ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of LaGrange to amend the code of the city, to amend the code so as to name certain streets in Crossvine Village subdivision, to repeal conflicting ordinances, to fix an effective date, and for other purposes.
Second reading of ordinances. To rezone one hundred and fifty-seven acres of property located in the six hundred block of Pegasus Parkway from CPGI to CPHI.
An ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of LaGrange to amend the zoning map and ordinances of the city so as to classify the use of real, well, reclassify the use of real estate located on Pegasus Parkway and owned by Callaway Foundation, to repeal conflicting ordinances, to fix an effective date, and for other purposes.
So moved.
Say it.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same? Passes unanimously. To rezone one acre of property located in the two hundred block of Moody Bridge Road from TNR to CRMX.
An ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of LaGrange to amend the zoning map and ordinances of the city so as to classify the use of real estate located on Moody Bridge Road and owned by William Luther Jones, to repeal conflicting ordinances, to fix an effective date, and for other purposes. And I'll just add that this is the ordinance which was first read, which is from TNR to CRMX.
So moved.
Mm-hmm.
Second.
I got a motion and a second. Any discussion? See you none? Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, I'm going to have to get y'all to raise your hand. All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed, the same?